The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA seven or Spectrum.
Okay, this is the one we need to order. Welcome to our special board meeting for January sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. We and we will start with the roll call. Kinsey?
Smith?
Here.
Becker?
Andrew will be, oh, is he up there? Okay, he's gonna join us remotely in a moment.
McCoy?
Here.
Leighton Warren?
Here.
Welch?
Here.
Byerly?
Here.
Mills?
Here.
Okay, so we have seven board members present. Andrew Becker will be joining us at about five o'clock. Okay, so six, did I say six? What did I say?
Seven.
I'm very sorry. It's six. All right, so let's move into the agenda here. The very first item is number two is BWP and Associates, Superintendent Search Leadership Profile Presentation, and we are joined. I will let you guys go ahead and introduce yourselves. Hit the button. The little face.
I forgot.
There you go. Yeah.
I'm Joe Porto from BWP.
Excellent.
And I'm Todd McNackey.
Welcome. All right, you have a, I believe, a slide deck to walk us through and some data that you'd like to share.
Either way.
Okay.
So thank you for inviting us back to give this presentation. The Leadership Profile Report is the culmination of the portion of the search that we call the Community Engagement Component, and it's the culmination of three activities. A survey that we put out to your whole school community, some one-to-one interviews we held with each board member, and then it culminated last week on January tenth with a wonderful day in the district that myself and four colleagues came and talked to people in focus groups. Today is the day we get to share whatever everybody had to say. So if we could get to Kinsey, the page that says data sources, that's where I'd like to begin. Next one. There we go. So with the focus groups, we ended up speaking to one hundred and thirty stakeholders. It was a pretty solid number. Some groups were bigger than others, but certainly it can be said that the district provided multiple avenues for people to get involved. There were virtual opportunities. There were onsite opportunities. We even met with one group that got overlooked. We met with them the next day via virtual. So we're proud of that, and I want to give a thank you to Kinsey in particular, who helped us put that together. The day went without a hitch.
She she pretty much runs our district now?
Yeah.
Um, I just wanted to say that I wish, obviously, I wish that there had been more participation in some of these groups, but I know that the district did a lot of outreach, and I was wondering if Lori, if you wouldn't mind just kind of sharing some of the things that the district did as far as notifying people of these opportunities.
Sure, thanks Laura. So first, of course, we put all the information out on our website regarding the survey link, both in English and Spanish, the community and parent meetings that were available for the focus groups. We used our social media platform, so LinkedIn, Twitter, Instagram, Facebook, all of our school Facebook sites and our Spanish Facebook page. Now, we did multiple pushouts, reached thousands of people through those opportunities. We did a press release that included both the survey links and the community focus groups. We did some direct mail, so we did emails, texts, and push notifications out on December ninth. Parents, staff, and the high school students all received personal emails multiple times. And then we included something in our e-newsletter connects that went out with the survey link. We emailed parents once again about the focus group opportunities on January third, as well as the students. We had placed the community sessions and the community calendars that are available to the public. And then our education connection newsletter went out to sixty-three thousand households, and it was on the front page of the newsletter regarding all the different community sessions. And then that's in addition to all of the individual personalized emails that Kinsey sent out to the various invited individuals that were invited to come and meet with BWP.
Very good. Thank you, Lori.
I think you should feel good about the opportunities you presented, and you can see on that slide the different stakeholder groups that we were able to talk to. In addition, our second area of source came from interviews we held with each of you. And then the third component, which everyone in your district had an opportunity to take part in, was a survey. We ended up with one thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven survey responses. When we look at this and compare it to other places we've been, this is an above-average sample size. You can feel really good about the results that we're gonna share today. Before we jump right into the results, I do want to take just a couple of minutes to let you know the process that we use to come up with the conclusions that you're gonna see. It is a combination quantitative and qualitative process, and we feel that it leads to a very reliable result. So let me just, I brought some props, just because I think sometimes visuals are are better than words. So it starts with whoever's doing an interview or conducting a focus group. We have our pad of paper. We literally write notes, you know? We can't have our computers because we really want to engage, you know, so the only way to do that is just hand notes. Then, so I, so everyone could read each other's work and also be able to apply this to a new program I'm gonna talk about in a minute. I then ask each of the team members to type up their results. So we have one of these for every interview and every group we we had. So what does that look like when they all come in? Stack like this, okay? Then we literally read each, by the way, each and everything a person says is on the notes, and each and everything that comes in in on the note sheets is read and analyzed. So even if you don't see some of the things you may have shared, your thoughts and your ideas were all documented. From there, we do a super scientific method. Take a look at this. Okay. There's no better way than to do some of these things by hand. So I go through, we go through every single comment. We give it a name, diversity, lots of options for kids, whatever, and then I start tallying, and this creates frequency distributions. Then, just to make sure we didn't miss anything, we tried a new, more objective quantitative approach, and we use this program. I I'll have to write you back with the exact title, but it's something along the lines of word bubbles. And our BWP assistant literally pops each one of these into a program, and it comes out with something that looks like this. You may have seen it. We used this just to double-check that we didn't miss anything on this. So when we compile all that together, that's how you're getting what we're about to share. The only other thing I want to say as a lead-in is that these are written in order of frequency. So as you see something on top, that means it was the most important or the most frequent thing that came up. So in this particular document, order does matter. It gives you an idea. So as you know, we asked three questions. You start with the positive. Your greatest district strength came out to be the diversity that's within your community and within the schools. And you are a first in any district I've ever worked in. You're the first district where that particular topic came out, not only as a strength, but the greatest strength.
So
and by the way, interrupt, we would like this to be.
Interrupting.
No, we want.
But when you said that, I felt like standing up and cheering.
Yeah.
Like this is, this is important. To me, this is important to know.
Now, of course, there's going to be issues related to equity and inclusion that are going to be concerns, but when the most frequently mentioned strength is this, you should be really proud. Something good is happening there. The second thing that came up in every group we talked to, there's multiple pathways for kids to succeed in this district, and I probably didn't do justice in the report to all of them. But, you know, you had everything from your international baccalaureate to your automotive program, and kids are being placed in jobs before they're even graduated. You should have heard your parents and community members talk with pride about that. Really cool. This one usually comes up in these kinds of things. Hats off to your staff, a strong, dedicated, high-quality staff. The support that your community shows the school district with, the main example people then gave was the passing of two pretty recent referenda in a tough time around the country to pass referenda. Kudos. These are, these are things that are just great. You always want to see child-centered focus. This one was neat. It's a big district, but it still has a small-town feel. And the examples people would give for that is that each of the elementary schools in particular don't have to be the exact same. Each one has its own little culture and climate, and people like that with their neighborhood school. The big district was also cited as the source of another strength, and that's that you have resources and expertise to to share with teachers as they needed, administrators when they need it. Your professional development program for staff came out as a strength, and then just pride in the community, the reputation of the community and the district. Questions or comments you'd like to make about the strengths? Anything surprise you in there? Yeah.
So the survey results, you kind of gave some distribution of, you know, the percentage that responded one way or the other. Is there any kind of general guidance that you can provide of, you know, the frequency and how it diminished over the this list of bullet points? Because ultimately, they're in order, but I don't know if the first one, ninety percent of the people said it, and three said the last one. Is there some some data that can support this, just so that we understand? If there's a concentration?
I don't like to use the frequency distribution as solid numbers. It's really hard to do that because I'm reading comments, and sometimes one comment hits three different things, and sometimes I'm consolidating, like it's the third comment about district resources, and and each one comes at it a little differently, so I pull it together. So I I don't like to give this as solid numbers, but what, and I have them if you want them. But what I do, James, is this is just like what we see in when we interview candidates. There's a certain cluster of the ones that are really frequent, and then I usually cut it off at the spot where you can see a considerable diminished. So while these are in order, these are solidly the most frequently talked about. Now, maybe Pride in Green Bay had six less, you know, tallies than the top one, but these are the ones that anyone who looked at the data would say, these are the ones. Then there's all kinds of outliers and single issues and such.
That actually helps a lot. So you've already pre-filtered this. This is like your top quartile or whatever, and now that's what we're doing. Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
So when you, when you're talking about frequency, is this, are they, or just to reassure anybody that may be listening, that's looked at in terms of strengths related to diversity, because you could have somebody in interview say, I'm so tired of hearing about diversity, diversity, diversity. So then they have, they say it three times in there, so it's frequent, but it's not as a strength. So if you could just share how you, you know, just so everybody knows that you actually go through and.
Yeah, we look at everyone, and the ones where people clearly said it during the component of the discussion where we said strengths, those are the positives. When they said it in relation to a concern, we worded it differently. Okay? Issues of inequality, you know, inequities, I think, was a bigger word that we tried to use when we did that. Mm-hmm. Great questions. Okay, what were the challenges that came up? The first three, James, what I just said, if if you wanted me on this one to differentiate how they landed, the first three are like way up there. Then it goes a little bit lower, and it's the next cluster. Declining enrollment, which brings with it underutilized schools and aging facilities, and the possible concern is out there in your community about closing schools, changing boundaries, and all the anxiety that that can cause. That was number one on people's mind. The structural budget deficit is very, your community is very aware of it, and they're concerned about it. They do kind of blame the state more than they blame you for that, which maybe is a good thing. I don't know.
It's more accurate.
But your your community is very well informed about that, and I didn't hear any kind of discussion about reckless spending or, you know, not being secure with money. So for what that's worth. Issues, I should, I'm gonna go back and say it's the top four that really came sky-high. Issues related to diversity, equity, inclusion. Here's what most people said in this category. Sometimes there's such a focus on being equal that being equal can actually be the most inequitable way to go. In other words, one school has super-high needs, another school not so much. They're both getting the same thing. The other piece that they were talking about here is just the natural where people leave. There's schools that are considered where people live. There's schools considered the have schools because they have a PTO, PTA generating funds, and one person said you can tell which are the haves and the have-nots, who has the best playground equipment, who has the most active PTA. And so that's the kind of inequities they were talking about. Okay? Low achievement. This was spoken with great passion. The administrative team had just, on the day we were there, they had just come from a meeting in which some brand-new, fresh state data was presented to them, and you already had pretty low achievement, and there was some even more to be concerned about. So this was fresh. They were they were speaking with passion in the way you want them to. It's like, this just won't do anymore. This has to change. So we were not happy to hear about the results, but very interested in the way people took it personally, and were feeling accountable, and really want to try some new things because what they're doing is not quite hitting it. So those, those were the top four clearly. These others were also mentioned quite a bit. A rise in student behavior issues with some also specific examples about increased drug usage and chronic absenteeism. You know who mentioned this with the most passion? The student group. The group where we talked to the kid, the high school kids. And you gotta believe them. They're living it, right? There's a very big concern about losing your good teachers and administrators. By the way, this one's not anything unique to Green Bay. We're hearing this one around the country. The current district office structure had concerns shared. It's a big district. There's a hierarchy, and there's some questioning as to whether it's structured the most efficiently. It's perceived by many people as top-down and a little out of touch with what's happening in the schools. The I didn't put it, the the phrase we heard, but what your teachers mainly, and even some parents mentioned, they were calling it initiative overload. But I wrote that more professionally. Too many new initiatives and changes. Some initiatives do not get fully implemented. And then finally, but equally of importance is the increasing mental health needs. And a lot of folks mentioned that this was on the increase even before COVID, and now it's even more noticeable. Questions or comments on the areas of opportunity for growth?
I don't think there's any surprises there.
No? Okay. Then we asked, knowing what you know about the strengths and weaknesses, what would be your view of the perfect superintendent? What should we be looking for? Strong, decisive, able to make tough decisions. Some phrase that able to say no when necessary. Stand by them and get them accomplished. There's a lot in there. One is just the strength, thick, people were saying have thick skin, be able to make unpopular decisions, be able to say no. But then they were also saying, then stand by them. Don't just, you know, because the squeaky wheels came in and you're gonna change. Stand by them, and then implementation was very important, especially to your teachers, your staff. Let's implement these things before we go on to the next. Visible, engaged, accessible, hands-on. Your schools, the principals, the associates, the teachers, the clerical, they all told us, we want to see the superintendent once in a while. Whether they come to the school and roll up their sleeves and help serve lunch or something, or they come to basketball games, you know? They want a visible, accessible, approachable, but most importantly, Todd's taught me, there's a difference between visible and actually engaged. They want engaged. Creative and innovative. Here's where this came from. The next superintendent is kind of has marching orders that we want something different. That's not, that's rare. Many times when we do this, people will tell us, tell the new superintendent, you know, don't come in and change everything and be disrespectful. Not that people want someone to come in like a bull in a china shop, but people are saying status quo is not working. We want somebody who has fresh, new ideas, creative, personable. So while you're saying no and standing up, you have to do it nicely. Okay? Yeah.
Joe, with that, a lot of it, I think that they want change in some areas, but they, from impressions I've gotten, they want consistency also on recognizing things that we've done well in Green Bay as far as connections and relationships and things like that. So I think it's a fine line, in my opinion, and not speaking for anyone else other than someone else shared my opinion on the survey. I think there's a fine line between we want change, but we also have a lot of really good stuff being built on here. I think it's mainly in that area of closing the achievement gap and academic instruction, but I think how we work with people in our district is is pretty positive and hopefully there's a difference between those two or it's recognized, so.
That's a good distinction. There was another, it didn't quite make enough to get on the frequency list, but there was another where it said respect the rich history, traditions, and things that are going well. So that that was out there as well, Brian. They would like a strong listener with good communication skills, a visionary instructional leader. So I think somebody with a strong background in teaching and learning, people know that the superintendent has other roles too, but with this challenge in your achievement, they want somebody who knows what they're doing with teaching and learning. Able to work collaboratively with the Green Bay Education Association. First time in my search career that something like that made it into the characteristics. That is something that you should be proud of. Some districts feel a friction there, and they feel that those are roadblocks. In your district, it came out as a strength and enough of a strength that they want that to be a trait that we look for. That's very unique. I don't know. At least in Illinois where I was, came from. Okay, so good job. They, this one was interesting. They they want somebody with the energy, passion, charisma, you know? They, somebody described it as presence, or another person described it as the it factor, you know, that that they have it. Someone you'd be drawn to. Commitment and growth for new ideas with diversity, equity, and inclusion. In other words, you're not quite there yet where you want to be, even though that was definitely a strength. Fiscal and facilities competencies are important, as well as that educational instructional leadership. Your community wants it all. They don't want just the manager, and they don't want just a curriculum person. They they want it all. And if you think about it, what do you have ahead of you? The but to fix the budget crisis and the school closing possibilities, and then this whole student achievement. So yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna have to find somebody who has both. And then honesty, integrity, trans- transparency.
Questions, anybody? Go ahead, James.
I just want to make sure that I remember correctly the process. The focus groups and most of the in-person interviews use the same structure as the survey. Is that a correct statement? Because I'm seeing the language actually that is used in the survey, and so you were presenting kind of prompts and things that they could select from as part as far as, you know, getting feedback from those focus groups?
The only difference in the survey and the focus groups is the survey had prompts. You could choose from what you wanted. With the focus groups, we just asked the question, no prompts.
Did you do any kind of translating into? Did you do any kind of translating into and matching to the, the survey results? Cuz I would just, some of these, the ability to work collaboratively is a survey response. So you, you got word from word from the focus groups?
It looks like we synced it on purpose, but it just thinks that maybe your.
Yeah, it looked like um we, we synced that up intentionally, but we didn't have to. It, it just turned out that way. Now, that was the way we analyzed the focus groups. Remember, there's three parts to this. There's the folk, and we did merge the focus groups and the board interviews. So what you just heard there was a synthesis of those two data sources. Todd's now gonna take you through some highlights from the survey. At your place, you should have the full survey results that you could look at uh in more detail as you, at, at your leisure. Tonight, we're just gonna hit the highlights. Todd?
Thank you, Joe. James, that's a great question. And when you see that alignment, it's almost like reassuring, quite honestly, that um those who took the survey, we had one thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven take the survey that they were responding similarly to those who we were meeting with face to face, which is pretty exciting. If you recall, the survey was uh put out to the public, uh, and it was open December ninth through January first. So just under thirty days, we had the survey out there, hoping for a number, you know, for everyone to, to um respond to. Um, so we had one thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven respondents and the focus group, we had a hundred and thirty. So you can get an idea of just their surveys, obviously a lot more. As Joe had indicated, it's an above average and a solid response and solid uh sample size. On this particular slide, you can see um how it breaks down who all responded. Um, and um sixty-five percent is Green Bay area public school residents and you have the parents. Um, parents of former students, employees, uh, students and volunteers in the district, in the schools. I think it's worthy to note that um when you look at the employees at forty-two percent, uh sixty-one percent of that group were actually certified staff. So you have that information in the packets in the survey. So that means those were, those are teachers generally. That's how school districts classify those. So about sixty-one percent of those who responded were teachers in that area. James, you have a question?
Um, in looking at the data, is there any way or um that you can isolate those parents? Cuz you could select multiple items. If I remember correct, you could, your characteristics, it was a multi-select. Is there any way to get to parents that were not also teachers? So that I, I, I'm just lacking the, how many people involve themselves in this activity that did not have any other association other than maybe having a child in school, but didn't work for the district and actually participated?
I will be honest, I don't know. I'd have to talk to our survey person to see if she could disaggregate that out.
And I don't know that that would be significant, um, a significant number, but it's, it's certainly worth something to, 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 to be aware of. Um, so I'm gonna continue. So that's the uh survey demographics. The next slide, you get into the district strengths. And these are um the results right from the survey and these are the top, top six. So number one would be the uh the, the item that most responded to. And you can see that it is uh excellent teachers and staff. And that, a lot of these are gonna mirror exactly what Joe had shared with you through the focus groups. And again, I'll just reiterate, we did not look to um align these. We took the information from three different sources and started to go through and, and analyze it. And this is what we came up with, which is again reassuring that there's consistency across the way in which we collected the data. So uh excellent teachers and staff and we're to diversity of students and community. I think it's worth noting there, um, I asked that question and I also asked, talking diversity in student body or staff. And um most of the respondents were student body and community. And you noticed in one of the items that Joe covered, that diversity in the staff is an area that they um are a bit concerned with. They want to see more diversity within the staff. Number three, number of educational options and programs. Joe had uh mentioned this. And everybody was very excited about the number of AP courses you offered, dual credit. Um, the BI, the, the um specialty schools, apprenticeships, you couldn't go on and, 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 and go on and on. And many mentioned about just the extracurricular activities and clubs and that are available to students as well. Another strength was uh the community, and I think a lot of that um probably was rooted in the passing of the referenda. Um, very supportive community. Um, they had said that PTOs are well-attended and there's a lot of um involvement from the community. And, and I will say, um, the community extends to businesses and relationships with um um different entities within the community, whether that be ro- Rotary, the chamber, um, the Chief of Police came up, the Fire Chief. Those types of um, um, relationships and, and involvement in the community, I think were key. Classroom technology, um, they were very proud about the, the amount of technology you have available. I think that was most noted when you probably had to go into the, the, uh, dealing with the pandemic, when you had to pivot, pivot to a remote environment. Um, certainly, the technology was um something that um they all felt was more than adequate. And the last strength would be the schools and facilities. Um, and it's interesting, I think part of that is the fact that the, they're, they're proud of their facilities. And they also liked that uh there was a recent referendum that was passed. Um, but you'll see uh on district opportunities, that also shows up as well. So um, there are areas that need to be addressed. No, please.
Number five, that classroom technology, that's one of the few, if only outliers, we had where there was no sync between the focus groups and the survey. I went back cuz I was just curious and um out of all the people we talked to, only one tally mark uh had anything to do with technology. So it's just that, just one of those outliers. I don't know what it, what it means. It's cool that it came out here, but it wasn't at the forefront on people's minds when we were chatting.
Any questions regarding the district strengths? Excellent. The next slide, district opportunities. And um, you know, when, when we were meeting um in our focus groups, we, I use the word opportunities, uh opportunities for growth. Uh, some use weaknesses. Um, but in the survey, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's pretty straightforward that, what the question was. And these are the items that um came out from the survey results. Uh, most important, number one, down to seven, you can notice that there's some ties in there. Um, again, some of these themes are similar to what Joe had shared with you. The first would be the recruitment and retention of qualified staff. Uh, again, something that most districts are wrestling with. Uh, when you look at the results and you have the results on, on page thirteen there. Um, fifty-seven percent of the respondents thought this was uh an important item. And so that's more than half who responded, said this is, this is an important item. Financial well-being of the district. Um, again, knowing that there's some um financial issues that need to be wrestled with. Again, not something that the district had um brought upon themselves, but some of that is uh decisions that were made outside the control of the district. But the reality is that um you'll have to make some decisions regarding that. Um, number three, meeting the needs of an increasingly diverse student population. So you can think about um with diversity, there's opportunities to celebrate, but there's also opportunities for growth. Um, and um the students that I met with certainly saw that there's a, a grand opportunity for growth there. The next two, quality of instruction and student academic achievement were, were both tied. Um, that was twenty-nine percent who had responded, felt that those were um opportunities for uh growth. And it's interesting when you think about the quality instruction, when in fact, one of the strengths was the amount of professional development that was provided. If I'm not, if I recall correctly. And excellent teaching staff. So you can see that, you know, that's probably something you would see surface in many districts. So ongoing attention in those areas is certainly something that needs to be addressed. Uh, number six, declining enrollment. Um, we, we know about that and we've discussed that. And declining enrollment also was, there was discussion just around attend, uh changing the attendance zones. Some of this, some of the um stress and anxiety that would occur around that. So um all of that falls under declining enrollment. And the last two, uh again, are um tied aging or inadequate uh facilities and legislative changes that impact public schools. Question about district opportunities?
Um, yeah, can you remind me, is there something um uh about the number six um that is important to your analysis? You have the top six strengths, six um uh opportunities.
Again, I look for where there's a cluster and then a gap. And if it, if it's happened to be six, that was by accident, not by a, a quota that I wanted to give.
So, so in looking at the um, the strengths, there is kind of a fall off between um community and then you go down into schools and facilities, there, there's smaller. But in district opportunities, what I'll see is it's a very broad distribution of scoring, right? And when you get below quality of instruction, uh, that, I don't know if it was on purpose or not, but actually maintaining a positive community relationship is at nineteen percent over the aging. Um, and that, or inadequate facilities and legislative changes at eighteen percent. But in my mind, I, I, I start losing interest in those numbers really quickly. And I would rather say, no, for the purpose of hiring someone, it does scream, you gotta be able to recruit teachers, right? You have to match the, or meet the financial challenges of our district and meet the needs of our, our diverse population and then, then instruction, right? And after that, it really becomes, you know, almost statistically irrelevant between the, the, the scores between the two. So, um, I don't know how that factors into the actual um end product. But that's just my, my observations of the data. I just.
Didn't have to get to six, but I do know myself and I, I have a thing for symmetry. And I, I think I remember that the concerns came out a certain way. And I, I don't want it to look like there aren't as many strengths as concerns. So I put a few, you know, put the next two uh up in there. So it was more uh for those reasons, James. But as you'll know, when I do the last slide, which is the profile itself, that's when we're picking off the top, you know, the top ones. Yeah.
Great questions. The next slide would be the uh next superintendent qualities, leadership skills and personal traits. So um leadership skills, communication skills, we heard that from our focus groups. We, now we see that also in the survey results. And we think about communication skills, we're thinking someone who's a good listener. Um, you can see it kind of blends right into the next two people, um, people, team management. Again, you're talking about being able to listen, communicate, understand. Three is relationship building. That, that, that all is kind of, for me, is just one big ball. Like, you want somebody who can engage. You want, you know, people had mentioned, they want somebody that has a sense of humor, someone who's gonna square up and have a conversation. They're not necessarily looking at their phone and doing that kind of stuff. Someone is not distracted. You feel like they're present. So I, I think that's pretty significant. And you look at the survey results, number one, communication skills, seventy-nine percent of the survey respondents said that is number, that, that's a key piece. So they're not looking for someone who um is engaging with them, but they don't feel like they're engaged. Cuz you evolve spoken individuals where they're not necessarily present. They don't wanna feel that. They want someone to be present. Um, so that's a pretty, pretty key uh piece of communication. So I wrapped kind of those one, two and three into that. Um, when you think about relationship building, I think there's a continuation on of the relationships that have already been built with community entities and organizations. I think that's a key piece of number three. And then four is cultural competence. So when you think about that, you're thinking about, again, um, the diversity piece. Understanding how to work with diverse groups, understanding what comes with groups of diversity. What comes with students who have unique needs, whether that be special ed, whether that be those who maybe are into gifted and talented. And what comes with students who um represent different cultural groups. And be able to engage in those, with those, with those individuals. And number five, instructional leadership. You had, um, Joe had mentioned this. That came across, I think, loud and clear. My focus groups and certainly is, is here in the survey data, an instructional leader. And they want to see somebody who understands instruction. Um, mind you, they also wanted to see somebody who understands the financial side of the house. So that's, that's the unique challenge you have. And I think when you think about the instructional side of the house, it's somebody who has some classroom experience. If you look at the survey results, that was a big factor, making certain that somebody, they knew what the classroom was like. A key piece, earns a lot of respect.
Oh, I'm sorry. And it's something, you know, as we, as we look at this with the discussion of the size of the district and how we've delegated and, and utilized our resources here, that obviously someone who's strong in instruction and strong in finances and strong in everything. You gotta call our limits someplace. And that, that's why as a district, you know, I've, I've been concerned at times with the reports of being top heavier. That's also why we hire people to help with those other aspects. And I hope the community recognizes that and takes that into consideration as we're looking for this expert in everything part of it, so.
That, that is so true. Um, the item that Joe had touched on, um, I think it was, uh, let me just get back there really quickly. Um, he had mentioned, I think, one of the last areas that they wanted to see was uh displays honesty. And that conversation in my groups was, was about some honesty, trust, empowerment. And it was allowing those around you to do the work that they know how to do. Cuz you're right, to find a leader who's steeped in the financial side of the house, instruction and all these areas is gonna be a tough goal. Um, but be able to empower and trust those who have expertise in that area is gonna make a big difference.
And, and we have people that are experts in that. I mean, we have a strong team um that have been just the best. And um, so, yeah, I, our next superintendent is gonna benefit from that.
The next item was the personal traits. Um, these are fairly straightforward. Um, a lot of them fairly close, integrity. If you look at the survey results, thirty-five percent have responded to integrity as being the, the most important. Child-centered. As a former superintendent, I love that. And whenever we were getting into conversation regarding budget, difficult, challenging topics, we always asked the question, question, is it best for children? And to see that come off and come out in the surveys as, as a top item, I think that's, that's, that's wonderful. For me, as a superintendent, if I'm looking to come to the district and apply, to see that that's something they want. Um, the community wants, the, the stakeholders want, I think that, that really um will probably draw some candidates. The next one's a problem solver, a commitment to the community. Um, when you get into commitment to the community, there's some discussions sometimes about whether they should live in the, in the district or not. We had, I had that conversation with many of you. Joe probably did when he was interviewing you. Some of that came up and most of them wanted a superintendent who's engaged. You can live in the community and not be seen at the supermarket. You can live outside the community, be seen at the supermarket, the coffee shop and, and the library. So when they talk about commitment to the community, they want somebody who's committed to the success of, of the school district. And then number five, champion of equity, diversity and inclusion. Um, I, I certainly enjoy that one. When I was meeting with the kids, I was in this particular room. And um when we were talking about personal traits, they pointed up there and said engagement, equity and excellence. That's what they wanted. I thought that was wonderful that they, they noted that. Questions about this um particular slide?
So the most fun part of doing these reports is this last piece. Because this is where some experience, some expertise and some data analysis all join together. The qualitative and the quantitative. So we look at our data sources, we look at the results. And then we have to create a profile that we're going to literally share with candidates. This is it. This is why we do community engagement for this last slide. So of course, now to, to get to this, you're looking at, well, what did the focus group had it? What was there? What was in the surveys? And as James has pointed out, the, the remarkable consistency between the two, when they're in both data sources, that's probably one you wanna put in there. Um, also, to keep it um from being too overwhelming, we look for ways to join and combine a couple of things. As Todd mentioned, he would put communication, people, team management, relationship building, those are all very similar. So we try to do that in the final profile. So we try to do that in the final profile. Um, I will say, James, this time, the number was used eight to ten, we have found in our experiences, is the right amount of detail for candidates. Less than eight doesn't give you as clear of a picture and more than ten, you start thinking that none of them are important if you can't narrow it down. So we ended up on this particular one. I thought there was a drop off after nine, and so that's where we ended it. So strong, decisive leader, able to make difficult decisions, stand by them and get them accomplished. One of your principals came up with that line and I loved it. I wrote it down and I thought I couldn't say it better. A leader who's visible, engaged and hands-on. We, I wanted to put hands-on so they get the the feeling you can be engaged, but hands-on gives you the feeling that we'd like you in the schools, not just at the football games and such. And fully vested in the district and community. Passionate, innovative and visionary instructional leader. Got three of them, three or four of them in there, but they're all very similar. Um, who can clearly articulate and successfully facilitate a plan toward continuous growth and improvement. I thought especially the teachers and principals I heard from that that um secondary clarification about facilitating the vision was important. A relationship and team builder with exceptional interpersonal skills. So Todd, I did just what you were suggesting there. Culturally competent, who can bring new ideas and energies into issues of diversity, equity and inclusion. A skilled listener and communicator, those two seem to go really well together, who will engage all stakeholders within the school community. A leader who models honesty, integrity and transparency, another threesome that seemed to go well together and were mentioned in all the data sources. Fiscally astute. I used the word instude astute quite intentionally. A superintendent doesn't necessarily have to know exactly the procedures of how to do a levy or how to, you know, do this report or that. That's why you have a business manager. But you, I've also seen some superintendents who have gotten in trouble because they didn't take the time to be competent, at least astute about what goes on financially. Collaborative leader who works positively. And by the way, I'll put, I'll I'll change that, uh Laura, you mentioned, let's use the real name of your associations. Is it the Green Bay Teachers? Okay, we'll put that right in there and other stakeholders. So this, as we discussed in the planning meeting, um, we've got this done at a good time now. There's still a little under a month left of recruitment. So we're going to ask you if you wouldn't mind, and I don't know if it's um Lori who does this or whoever's responsible, but we would like you to post the leadership report, the two survey results, we, we want your community to have them. And then um the, if you can extrapolate the profile out of there, that can go uh in the announcement of the superintendent search. So we've got this good data. Let's let the community know what they said and how we're going to use it to guide us. And also, as we committed in the first meeting, there are some people who have applied and they applied based on the original, if you remember, we were jokingly saying it was kind of a generic um posting. Well, now we're going to attach this profile to as many postings as we've already got out there. But we also in our system have the ability to email every candidate. And I, we plan to attach this to an email, say, this is now the leadership profile. And if you would like to alter or add to your um application in any way you'd like, now that you see this, you still have till February tenth. So we're very pleased with how that worked out.
Okay.
Oh, you had this funniest look on your face.
Go ahead. No, I'm sorry. Sorry, while 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 he's working on that, is there any other, any other questions? Go ahead, Laura.
I have a question since it's related to this and I'm not sure if you can answer, or maybe the teachers in the room could chime in as well. But I'd like to understand um the importance of having a superintendent that has been a teacher and why that is seen as so critical. And the reason I ask um is because I see them as different skill sets. And I see a big challenge in organizations is when somebody's really good at a job, I always say making widgets, or we're going to make them the supervisor of making widgets. There's a very different skill sets and teaching is way beyond making widgets. But I just, I just like to learn more about why that is so important when there's completely different things that they're doing. And if they have a good relationship with the union and respect the work that teachers do, why is that experience critical?
Please.
I think the teachers feel like they want to have somebody who has stood in their shoes. When it's perceived that decisions are made from above, they'd like to know that the person who's making those has some experience in the trenches, as they might, might say. I do personally challenge um that a person has to be, have been a teacher. Um, because for instance, there's some wonderful administrators that have come from the realms of school psychologists and social workers. In fact, I used to love hiring administrators who came from those ranks because no one's better at problem solving, differentiating. And um, you know, some of those conflict management, those folks are absolute experts in so much than an administrator does. So I usually um, I I'm never surprised when the staff says, gotta be a teacher, gotta be a teacher. But I've never had a teacher argue with me when I say, what about a special ed person? Or what about someone who came, oh, well, as long as they have worked with kids and have been in a school. Brian?
I I think that goes into a a view of in K-12 where a lot of the time, and I'm going to put on my educator hat, that we refer to it as educators because you have your school psychologists, you have your special education teachers, you have your social workers, you have your school counselors, all kind of falling under that same umbrella. So my guess would be they want them coming from the educator realm uh and at least having some experience with that. And to be licensed as a superintendent, I assume it's the same thing as an administrator. You have to have three years of, at least three years of educator experience in whatever field you had before. So outside of being a business manager, I think that the majority of um administrative positions require at least that. But I get the concern with it, so.
Go ahead.
As a teacher, I think one problem is that we don't feel like we're necessarily listened to. Like, we're always just told what to do and this is the new thing we're going to do and this is what we have to do. But what about this? Well, this is what we're going to do. And I think that that's a key thing. Teachers want a voice.
That's exactly what they were saying.
It it gets back to the area where we're talking about new initiatives and initiative fatigue. Sometimes the best people to know that what that fatigue feels like are those who have experienced that in the in the school setting.
Just to wrap it up, thank you for explaining that. And I, the superintendent license, of course, obviously now that's definitely a key. But to wrap it around, if I have never heard that concern is, as long as I've understood education, that's always a concern. And we've always, we've always had to have leadership who's been teachers. So, you know, if that hasn't been working so far, not saying it shouldn't be. I'm just, I'm just trying to understand this as as a non, non-teacher. So thank you for the time to explain that.
Go ahead, Brian.
And and I think we've seen it with leadership times, it's kind of turning a ship, you know, that we can't all of a sudden just change the direction, but with that gentle push that we hope that our superintendent has or the the traits are looking for of of that gradual change is what can actually happen as opposed to a a sudden shift of it, of seeing that that end goal with it, so.
So I'm used to seeing like an educational requirement or equivalent professional experience, right? But it's also followed by, and I'm I'm wondering if it speaks to a possible way that we can express both sides of this. Um, in that passionate, innovative and visionary instructional leader, whether or not you've been a teacher or not, I don't want necessarily someone who can come in and speak to a new initiative. I want someone to come in and answer questions who can demonstrate that they've done it before, right? And so is there any uh ability to introduce the word demonstrated ability to articulate and facilitate? So the questions are, when did you do it? What was the results of it and how did you do it versus them coming in and saying, here's what I would do. I haven't done it before, but here's what I would do. Uh, I, I really appreciate being able to say, you need to come in and demonstrate that you've done this before and here are the results.
That will come during the interview process.
We can certainly articulate that. As far as making a tweak on this, um, does successfully facilitate not hit what you're talking about? Under um passionate, innovative, visionary instructional leader, we've got articulate, you can talk the game and then successfully facilitate.
So I was keyed in on the present tense of the verb, right? Um, so, um, and I was looking for a way to to say, you know, to to articulate, you know, come with this experience, right? And you, it it may be nuanced and we can get it done with that. And so I I just, um, either way.
We'll have, like I said, in the interview process, this, these are questions that we'll have plenty of opportunity to ask and 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 um and make sure that, you know, that your concerns are addressed.
I agree with your point a hundred percent. When Todd and I and Sheila are doing the screening interviews, we're, we're going to be focusing maybe eighty percent on what they've accomplished, what they they can demonstrate that they've done. Because research in both the education and the business world, they don't always sync up very much. But in a one place where they sync up is a simple thing, but people forget it sometime. The most clear indicator of future success is past success. It's as simple as that.
Go ahead, go ahead. Can I ask other questions?
All right, more of a comment. What um, what James was talking about, I think that's definitely going to come through in um behavior-based interview questions. You know, um, to ask, how have you done this in the past rather than what would you do? Because I could tell you all the things I'm going to do to lose some weight, right? But what have I done? I mean, so you really, you have to be able to articulate that and that's going to be so important. And and I'm sure you guys do that in the behavior-based research or interview questions. So that I'm, I'm with you and I'm, um, thank you for this profile and excited to see who we find.
Go ahead, Brian.
You know.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just a quick follow-up, you know, the word demonstrated is a great word and it came up in our folk, my focus groups quite a bit. Because around superintendent, do you, does the candidate need to have superintendent experience?
Yeah.
And the response was they should have demonstrated experiences that could, you know, would lead you to believe they would be a successful candidate as a superintendent. That that was the key piece and that's what you're getting at, too.
Go ahead, Brian.
I have the two parts, one with that and then just a side question. And I think the experience in a K-12 system is important. And with this being a national search, I know that there may be people interested in applying that have demonstrated experience in larger districts that may have different approaches to education than what we have. And I'm, I'm being very specific on what I'm saying. I'm being purposely vague. Um, with that, so we, I I I think it's important for the board to take into consideration that aspect of it as well. Um, different states have different models. And Wisconsin and Green Bay, we have, we have strong public schools here and to making sure that we continue to utilize that part. Um, just a question with the next step in the process, uh, with the new post, which is next slide on there. Um, could you remind me of which websites these have been posted on and whether they'll be uh reposted on there? I'm looking at, for example, I'm looking at Edweek's uh top schooljobs.org and I'm not seeing anything with us. And I just couldn't remember if that was one or just where the window had fallen.
Yeah, I don't, we did not post on Education Week. Um, we did post on all the state uh sites and they were posted through. Um, I want to say the, what's, it's closing on, I think it's through the end of January is when we were posted. Because you have to pay for a full month type of thing is what it was. So we posted, we're posted through the end of January.
Oh, I'm sorry. And then could you, I didn't mean to cut you off there, um, the national sites that we're looking at as well?
Those were posted, so state sites were posted from the time we left this meeting. If you recall, when we decided on what that posting was going to look like, they've been out there the entire time. The um national sites were for the full month of January, six weeks. All the sites themselves, um, I'd have to go back and look at those.
AASA, which is the superintendent organization. And then I apologize for not knowing the exact name, but it's the um Latino Educator Association. Um, I think they link it as edu, as administrators. I don't think it's under superintendents. And then um the African-American um Administrators Association. I think even if you just Google anything close to that, you'll get what the organization name is. Yeah.
And I don't know if it'd be possible within the contract or within the board. Um, if you know the pricing through Edweek, I always think of Edweek as being one of the go-to places. Um, where it's going to be, we're going to get a a large chunk of people as well with it with the national searcher. Your thoughts on that?
Edweek is extremely um expensive and we went to the max in your budget.
Yeah, that's interesting. As as a former superintendent, um, and and knowing colleagues who are looking for positions, Edweek is not necessarily the go-to in any longer. Yeah, you're, you're, most of it, you can go through the state associations, the uh AESA is a large one. And um, and um, what was this, and LinkedIn, those types of things is that's where you're going to know. So I don't see education. It was in the day when it was the publication before it went web-based, but now that's not where you find most superintendents go and look for position.
There's competition.
From my experience.
Competition now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I've been trying different ways here and I guess maybe I just have to talk for you to see me. I tried, um, I tried the hand, I tried waving, but I think the, if the, can we go back just for a second to the profile, please?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I guess my question and just, just a short summary of this, I'm not, I I think there's, I think there's all good information in here, but could I just get a, could you just give me a brief example of like what? What made a different leadership profile stress that we didn't? In other words, I look at this and yes, it came forward from our, um, like what's, what's not on here? Uh, wouldn't everyone want all of these things? Does that make sense?
It absolutely makes sense. And um, sometimes when we launch this process, there's some skepticism that don't these all, you do all this talking and all this, don't, don't they all end up the same? And and they clearly do not. Um, one thing, Andrew, that's been coming up, especially within the last two years, is um, and often the first bullet, uh, districts are looking for a uniter. And that comes from. And that comes from the political divide in the country that's playing out in boardrooms across the nation. That.
Would anyone not want a uniter?
But that's, that's not what your community said they want. They, they must feel that there aren't. That that's not an issue that you need to overcome at this point. So. We go with what the people say, but you wanted an example.
Okay, that's, that's, that's fair. I guess I would think that. You know, and it, and maybe it's, maybe it's more about what, what things merit a specific bullet point, even though probably no district would. Dislike anything that's on this list. Maybe it's more about the prioritization and what, what really stands out as its own bullet point and like what's first, is that more to do with it?
Yeah, the priorities are often very different. We have, um, some districts that, um. Maybe their achievement levels are, are high or amongst the highest in the state, but they're about to. Uh, face a, a budget crisis. Um, many suburban districts are, are like that. And so they'll often have the fis, the fiscal astuteness and so on, much higher in, in there. If the district knows a referendum is coming. Um, sometimes we'll see ability to communicate with the, uh, community about a referendum. Some districts we've had are, um, coming off of terrible public relations disasters. Um, and so we'll, when we get a district like that, we'll often see politically savvy. Um, a, as, as a thing. So I, I would.
No, it makes, I mean, it's.
Strangely that these are very unique and different in each district. But you're right, you look at this, who wouldn't want this? But this is what your community specifically said they wanted. And how passionate they were about certain things.
Sure. And you might have a, you might have a district, you might have a, a district that. Doesn't have enough people in the business area like we do. So maybe business rises up to the, you know, right up to the top or something. So, okay.
Yeah, Andrew, that's a good point. Um, some districts are really small. Like mine when I was a superintendent. And so I had to be the curriculum leader. Um, and I had to know my way around the finances too. So it depends. Bigger districts can, um, don't always have to put that up at the top.
If, if I may, I think, Andrew, it's, it's a little bit about what, I, I think it was, it's not the question, it's what's not included. I think what is included. So when you look at that last bullet point. Um, collaboration, um, have a collaborative attitude with the Green Bay area, you know, education association. You would not find that in most profiles.
And I did under, you did.
And that I think is a great idea. From a protective superintendent coming in and I know there's a great relationship with the, with the teachers' union. That's a, that's a positive versus a contention, you know, contentious relationship.
And there I do, you did, you did single out, I remember you singled out that one as a particularly. Unique thing and I, I can imagine places where. When you said we're like, well, the only place that's happened, I know, I know that place, places that. You know, truly. Don't have that relationship with their unions at all in, in other places. So, um, okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Do you guys have any closing remarks?
Uh, I just wanted to wrap it up with the, um, next steps, just so we're all on the same page.
All right.
The last day, um, that we're accepting applications is the 10th. And then Sheila and Todd and I have the 13th through the 17th. Where we're going to look at all the applications, every single one. We will match it up against the profile and we'll pick anywhere between 10, I put 10 to 12, but it, it's a. It, it all depends on where they lie and how closely matched they are. We'll do our screening, do background checks, get all our ducks in a row. And then we'll come back for a very important meeting with you on the 20th. And this will have be two parts. Uh, one part, we will share the six. Or five to seven candidates that we recommend that move on to round one. We will give you basic background information on all of them. We'll introduce you to a Dropbox that will have every sheet of application material. So you can look at that. And then the second part of the meeting is we will talk about questions and interviewing and how to reach consensus. And, uh, so very important meeting. That one's going to need to be about an hour and a half to two hours.
That, um, I want to say that's enclosed session. Yeah.
Yes.
For confidentiality for these applicants. Um, I just want to say to the rest of the board here that just start thinking a little bit, ruminating on what questions you. Want to ask, um, we'll obviously listen to any recommendations.
We will come with examples, with a couple of sheets of examples.
And then we'll have to, you know, have a little bit of organization about how we're going to. Question applicants, um, so that they're all get the same. A treatment. So, go ahead, Brian.
If you can't answer this, I understand. Looking at the number of applicants that you've received and comparing it to similar districts in size and scope. And geographic region, would you feel? Comfortable with the number of people that have been interested comparing it to other districts?
We're, we're satisfied right now. We have, um. Uh, fifteen people in the system who have already applied. And we have over ten people that we are actively courting. And out of those ten people, three have made a formal commitment that they are going to follow up and apply. So right now we're feeling pretty good.
Okay.
Anything over twenty is going to be, uh, feel like a very good response.
Okay. Anybody? Go ahead.
Then your, um, your first round is February 28th to March 2nd. Your second round is March 8th. And, uh, uh, six to eight. And then we will also combine that with, um, some sort of day in the district, uh, experience. And then hopefully you'll have everything you need by March 8th to start talking about. Uh, who you want, and then you start some negotiations and we are right on track for your goal of an April announcement.
Can I ask you a question? I, I mean, I'm hoping this won't happen, but if we get to the end of this process. And we've got a couple of candidates that we. Feel like we need to see again. Like just like we can't, we're having, we're having some trouble. Is that something that would be available to us to have these people come back for just one more look?
Absolutely. It's happened in our experience.
I just feel like we need to know, yeah, that, that, that that's a possibility because it's such a huge decision. And I, I just, um, I just want to know that, 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 I mean, it might be hard. It might mean we have another meeting that's not, I mean, it might mean a bunch of things, but I want to know that that's available. Um, if we get to the end and, and we're, any of us are struggling a little bit with the choice.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I would just say it, it would be great if that, if you take that option to make that a bit unique.
Yeah.
Right? You don't want it to be another sit and get, answer questions because you already have two kind of unique opportunities here. I'd make that third one. Something different.
Yeah. I don't know what exactly what that would be, but we, anyway. Yeah, maybe they have to come and, and.
Sometimes.
Offer a song. I don't know.
Sometimes boards will ask a candidate to come in and give a presentation. So you could actually see him or her, how they would present a proposal to the board. So just created things like.
Yeah, I just, I just wonder, you know, so, um, having been through this, uh, just once, you know, like it. Sometimes you need, you need just another look to make sure that maybe where you were going. That you're sure of that. That's all. So. Um. Go ahead, Brian.
Um, the survey belongs to the district now, I assume. Okay, so. For instance, if we had community groups that were working on a master plan of the next. Ten to fifteen years, this would be a valuable resource for what the community is thinking as well. If they wanted to, since it belongs to the district now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, no, it's, um. Absolutely. Absolutely. Does anyone have anything else they need to know? Any questions while we have these people here before us in person? Okay. Thank you. Thank you for coming. I appreciate it. Absolutely. Okay, we've got a little bit of, of voting we need to do, um, um, let's just take a, 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 a. Just want to take a minute break here. While I think. Good night. Brian, can you, can you read the thing to go on the close session? All right, we're gonna, we're gonna keep going here, guys. Um. All right, so on to number three, which are action items. Uh, we have a couple of votes to take. Uh, number one is employment of staff. Um. See here. Would someone please read the motion?
I move that the employment of staff as presented be approved.
Second.
Okay, any questions, any, any input? Okay, Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. Andrew, are you able to vote?
Uh, I think I might have to log out and back in again. I will vote, I will vote yes on this and hopefully we'll be in for the. Next one.
Okay, thank you.
You want us to take a moment, Andrew?
No, I, I'm, I'm voting yes.
Okay, all right.
All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Next is, uh, number, is B, a resignation of staff, um, James.
I move that the resignation of staff as presented be approved.
Second.
Any questions, any concerns, any, okay. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open.
Andrew, are you good?
I voted online, I was a little bit online, yes.
All right, very good.
All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Uh, next, uh, C is purchase of Jackson Elementary Playground Equipment. Josh, did you, um, are you just here for any questions that might come up? Is that, okay, I, I. Um, would someone, uh, James, would you read the motion?
I move that the purchase of playground equipment, assembly, installation and delivery from Lee Recreation LLC. At Jackson Elementary School in the amount of three hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety cents be as presented be approved.
Second.
Okay, do, does anybody have questions for Josh? Anything they, go ahead, Brian.
I just have a comment within, I emailed, um, Josh and Josh, our manager of facilities. I think it's a great opportunity that our students get input on the design of these playgrounds, especially on something that's so. Public and that the students are going to be able to utilize. So I just want to appreciate the response from Josh to Powell. Um, with assuring us that the principals and depending on the building, you know, the, the amount of leadership. Leadership's not the right phrasing for that, but initial, the kids get a say, that's what I'm trying to say with it. On, on the input of the playground and the, the design, especially with the uniqueness of our buildings and. Kids like to play on playgrounds, so they should have a good say with it. So I just want to thank you for having that.
Yeah, uh, Josh does a great job, um, engaging in the school communities on, on these. I did want to address, I, I had talked to Nancy very briefly before the meeting. Um, and just so all you know, we, we do have five of these projects coming. This is the first one. It had already been pretty, um. Designed, you know, um, so it's, it's ahead of the other ones. Um, we may, depending on, um. The facilities master plan specifically on, on the playgrounds, we may want to wait to see if there are additions or, or things like that. Because we'd hate to put in a brand new playground and then have to move it. Um, but with this, with this one at Jackson, we felt, uh, pretty good that that wouldn't be the case here.
Is it possible to order a playground equipment, um, while the prices are as, you know. Knowing that you might not install it for a few years? Is it possible to even do that?
Um, I have not looked into that.
Okay, just curious. Right? Well, I mean, I'm, I'm assuming prices are only going up.
Yes, prices are going up.
Yeah. So it's a, sorry, it's just a thought I had. So anyway, um. Any other questions, any concerns for Josh about this? Okay. Um, I think we're ready to vote, Kinsey.
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Thank you, Josh. Okay, that, um, completes our agenda and now we will be. I would entertain a mo, motion to. Uh, turn into, into closed session. Go ahead, Brian.
Uh, I move that the board convenes closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five, one A and F. Considering financial, medical, social or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons. Preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where paragraph B applies, which. If discussed in public would likely, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to. In such history or data or involved in such problems or investigations to it for. The purpose of holding hearings under Wisconsin statute one twenty point one, three, one, C and E three. And Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight five, one G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body. Who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation. In which it is or is likely to become involved, more specifically to it. Review of notice of claims and potential allowance or disallowance of claims.
Can you get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, uh, do we take a, a vote or do we just, uh, all in favor? Recorded vote. Okay, um, Kinsey?
Smith?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Leighton Warren?
Aye.
Welch?
Aye.
Lyerly?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Motion carries with all in favor.
Okay, we are adjourned into closed session. Thank you.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling nine two zero. Four four eight, two zero, two five, or by email at communications at gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.